In the dis- you may consider a motion to go into closed meeting. About all of the man. Mr. Cherry?
Here.
Mr. Edman?
Here.
Mr. Meeks?
Here.
Mr. Moody?
Here.
Ms. Simmons?
Here.
Ms. Randall?
Here.
Neil Wright?
Here. Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, before we start, I have one additional item that we'll add, and that's a briefing on ordinance that you have on the regular agenda tomorrow. It's the one that deals with the budget. But this is your quarterly meeting where you have your partners at the table, particularly the partners that deal with economic development. So we have an economic development-related agenda for you tonight. And the first item on the agenda is a briefing, an update, a status report from the master developer and his team for Victory Village. And in that regard, we invited Bob Williams to make this update for you.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, John. Mayor, members of council, boards and commissioners, staff, ladies and gentlemen, it's a pleasure to be with you. I thought I might do a little bit of going back and then coming forward with the Victory Village and then get where we are today.
Where are the lights?
You need the lights now, Bob. We were trying to help your screen over there. Well, in fact, if you could give him the light, I think he's going to talk.
There we go. We signed the contract on Victory Village in June of '07. The day we signed it, this was the site. This is Victory. Here's Greenwood coming down, and this is the first part of the Sandler project, and he had just started putting in some foundations on that side. And so this part here became the part that we laid out that's now Victory Village. Here's Victory Boulevard again, here's the interstate, and here's Greenwood Drive. The college, which ended up basically on this back piece right in here for the 40 acres that the city gave to TCC, they took five back because they had to put a BMP in for the drainage, so the college really got 35 acres. This is the 35 acres that belongs to the college. This is their Phase One. They're currently building this now, the student center, and they have room for two more buildings, and they have parking for 1,400 cars. What we've got in here is apartments and other uses that we've programmed on the property. But what I wanted to show you is the... Give you an idea of what it looks like today.
Can you see my mother?
There's the site today, looking across Victory to the college with Freedom Avenue going up and then Castine going out to Greenbrier. We built campus way down to this point, cul-de-sac that we'll take it out the rest of the way to McLean when we get development opportunities on the backside. We've also put Victory Way in to this tee and stopped at that point. We sold the piece on the corner for a hotel, but once they start, we will have to put this street in and take it out. As you can see, that street goes out and intersects with McLean. That will be called Corporate Drive. So... But this is what's been built at the present time. We've put in the roads, water and sewer. We got the brick sidewalks in. Whether you can pick them up on this picture or not, we have all the brick sidewalks here, here, and also have what we call the acorn streetlights installed. This site was modified and rezoned last year for the apartments, and this piece was added and this street was closed. So this whole site in here now is set up to be the apartment site. I think I got a layout. This is the apartment site picking up from the roundabout at the college, which is here, going down and then extending Elliott from here all the way over and tying it in on this side to Freedom where it comes in. Elliott, as you can see, is already partially in there. It's a paper street, but it... What we're going to do is extend it and tie it into here and put the apartments in that triangle behind Elliott and in front of Freedom Avenue. That's kind of where we are at this point. The BMP was on the property when we first started. We probably would prefer to not have been in that location because it kind of affects the depth on the parcels on the front of Village Way. We're looking at the possibility of getting the engineering estimate as to what we can do to move that and open that back up to give us some depth. What is that serving at, a TCC campus, that BMP? What, this? No, that'd go... Well, what we got, Mayor, is right through here is a crown. Everything on this side runs that way. Everything over here runs that way. But I think we can take this back to McLean, put it into that drainage, let it come down and go into here. Do away with that altogether? Do away with it and hopefully recapture it and open up those parts. And that was there before you purchased it? Yeah. Yeah, it was...
How many acres does that represent, Bob?
Six and a half.
Six and a half.
Mm-hmm. See, it was already there. Here's the one that the college drains into. There's the one that was there, and that's where they put the dirt. I got you.
The pond represents six and a half acres?
This, yeah.
Oh, the whole park, the whole...
Yeah. Yeah. So hopefully, we can recapture that, and if we... And it works out for us, if we can do that, then you can see how much more depth that we'll get. Because, see, we've got little long narrow buildings in here with some parking behind it, but that's really not good use from the standpoint of the land being visible on Victory, and we need to get it back further. And... Because it's kind of tight in there, and the only thing you can do is put some long buildings on it and parking behind it. If we can get that out of there, we can really open that up and make a nice use out of it. But that's kind of where we are today with the project. We're looking at trying to make some different changes to the master, and that's why we wanted to talk to you tonight, to see if you were amenable to accepting. We go through EDA with some changes. We've had some market studies done. We got an idea of what we think will work out there, and we'd like to go to EDA with a new master and come back to you with it after they've had it. Most of y'all, I think, may know Bill Hudgens from Harvey Lindsey. Bill is the developer on City Center and Newport News. I asked Bill to come and chat with you about what the market is out there, what it took to get Newport News where it is. So, Bill, will you come up and talk a little bit about what the market is and what it's going to take? Bob, before he takes over? Yeah. On a high level, what all do you want to introduce to EDA to bring back to us that you not already have there now? The uses and so forth, I'm working with the market study. Okay. Bill. So you haven't defined it all just yet? We haven't defined it. Okay. Plus, we'd like to do some give and take with EDA as to what they think will work for us out there. Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, council members, commissioners, thank you for allowing me to come before you with Bob's team today. Appreciate that. I think the biggest... I had the opportunity to get with Bob in a smaller group and talk a little bit about my ideas, and truthfully, my ideas had less to do about real estate and more to do about looking back at how we accomplished as much as we accomplished at City Center at Oyster Point. And I guess it was four or five themes that I threw out in that meeting that I'd like to share with y'all today. And the first is, and it may sound a little bit like you're at halftime in NCAA tournament when you hear my comments.
Is Old Dominion playing?
I wish they were. I wish they were.
Virginia.
What we were fortunate enough doing is we started that project at the very beginning of the economic growth cycle, the previous economic growth cycle. And we took that momentum, and we rode it for six years, the hardest we could, with our public-private partnership. And in that situation, it was the City of Newport News and their economic development team, lady by the name of Florence Kingston, and their city manager, Neil Morgan, who, with their council and their elected folks, were our team members during that period of time. And the momentum that we were able to achieve came to a screeching halt about '07, '08. And we were humbled. You know, we thought we had all the answers until '07 and '08, and then everybody was humbled. We master-planned our project there for a million square feet of office, and we achieved about 600,000 square feet of that office during that growth period. We're now looking, and you know, another use group, just kind of hitting on a couple of those use groups. Back in the time, we were only scheduled for 100 units of residential. And during that growth period, we revised our master plan, and we ended up with about 700 units of residential. Some for sale, a lot of it for lease. And one thing, I'm very... We had 54 condominium units, and the project that we did build, we've sold... We have one left that's scheduled for closing next week.
That market went south.
That's amazing.
So it's a small victory, but a big victory for us. You know, but that does point out some things we threw away. We had a high-rise condominium project that we were going to pursue with our Motte Hoffler. And thankfully, you know, the bleeding, we paid for the plans, and I won't point out the architect, but Burl Saunders helped us with all of that. And we determined the right thing to do was to tear that set of plans up and start over. The market demand just wasn't there. So timing and momentum was a theme that we talked about, excuse me. And then we talked about market demand. Again, we're looking at office in an entirely different way today. Even over at City Center, we're thinking medical office applications. We're still institutional there. We have a real aspiration of a city hall moved to Midtown. So it's very institutional-driven, medical-driven, and much smaller office units. It's maybe 2,000 or 3,000 square feet where it used to be 10,000 to 15,000 or 20,000. So office, we're not sure we're going to make it to our million-square-foot goal. We think we're probably 750 is probably where we'll end up on office. The residential continues to be a popular, walkable environment, especially if we can succeed with our entertainment district there that we've been working on for three and four years. If we have that theater and the live entertainment and some restaurant choices, residential's become more popular there. The hotel has done very well there as well. But in market demand, we looked across, if y'all are familiar with the geography, across Cannon Boulevard at another piece of land that the city owned there. And Burl Saunders helped the city and the EDA master-plan that back in '07 and '08. And we had thought we could do more density and more parking garages, that the demand would continue. And the last time I gave this talk, Burl was not in the room, so this time I didn't... We had to take that plan and tear it up because it just wasn't functional. So when I did come and when I was asked to review the plan, I said, "Is this the same plan you've been working on since '07 and '08?" I said, "In all due respect, you're not helping your teamwork to get anything done if you're working from a plan that's not relevant or current." So I said to the group, "Tear it up. Start over." Because if you're not working hand-in-hand on a plan you believe in, you're not going to be winning that competition with whatever adjacent community is out there. So relevant plan, market-focused, financeable, gosh. Financeable is so difficult for any project. And my public-sector partner over there just told me that, you know, everybody understands the finance challenge, and we all have it. And so we need to find ways to make projects that should get built, built together by working together. The number-one thing that's helped us over there is flexibility. Our public partner would sit down at the table with me, and sometimes I think it's '07, '08, she thought it might be positioning. By the time we got to '09 and '10, she said, "I think Bill's telling me the straight scoop." Because we just couldn't get things done unless we worked together. So the end of my pitch to John and the development group was, "Tear this up. Get in a constructive work session with Patrick and with your team. Put something on paper you truly believe in that can work, and hit the path together in a way that nobody can separate you, both from the EDA marketing and the private-sector marketing, and make something happen because we're about to hit another one of these growth spurts where things can be achieved." So my talk was less about product or the dynamics of financing. It was more about timing, a really good plan, a market-based plan, a relevant plan. And then fourth, teamwork, like you've got to work... It's really hard to land projects, and if you're not working hand-in-hand, you're never going to get there. So it was a halftime speech and less about real estate. And I do have opinions about real estate and where things should be positioned and all the dynamics of this. And Bob's asked me to help him in the future on some of that, and I'm happy to do it. But that was my two cents to y'all's group, and thank you for willing, allowing me to share it with you.
Thank you, Bill. Thank you. Appreciate it. I just want to give you a little bit of background of what it's taken to get Newport News where it is. And from our standpoint, we got Devaris, who I think is probably one of the top retail people in the country. And we had him on the contract. We've had him on the contract for two and a half years, trying to bring retail in there. And so far, you know, we've not been successful in landing anything. We had Ripley Heat Wall work on the first apartment project. Then we went to Essel Nussbaum on the apartment project. And I think we now have a market-rate developer that's hopefully going to be able to put this together and put the apartments on that site. I think... The same site with some blue there, Bob? Yeah. Yeah. The... This is this one right in here. The... It was the one I had... This is that same site. Right, okay. Laid out. And this is about 200 units on that site. And we really need some people out there, and as Bill said earlier, that what we need is momentum. We've got to get some mo going on this project. So we're going to look at what we're working here to get mo going, instead of trying to make some of this stuff go that won't go. And we want to sit down and talk with EDA and bring... We got a market study we want to bring in. I've given Patrick a copy of it. And let's go through the market study and look what they say will work and revise this master and come back to you. I got a... If any of you... With Mr. Ogwol's presentation on the economy the other day from ODU, the press... Pretty interesting, this chart. The first recession we had back in '32, it only took that long to recoup. Then the ones we've had since then ran anywhere from 26 to 48 months. The current recession has gone down, has come back to this point in 80 months, and is projected by 2014 to get back to where it was in '07. So this is what we've been fighting, trying to do Victory Village. And Hampton Roads, unfortunately, it's worse.
That's right.
The top line, the red line is what happened in the U.S. Virginia is way up here. Hampton Roads is here in recovering from the recession. So when you add his projections and the fact that Hampton Roads has been slow to recover, that's what we're battling on trying to do development on this project at present time. So we think we're going to be able to come up with some uses based on the market study, based on Bill's input, and some stuff that Burl's doing now. You want to comment on some of the projects you're doing now, just how you've changed them from what we did here?
Yeah, I can.
Okay.
Just to kind of speak to this, we're engaged in probably eight projects of similar nature across the state. Most of them started around 1990, '98, so they ran through that period Bill was talking about. But in all cases, we've had to... The ones that have been the most successful are the ones that are the most flexible in the opportunities that they allow you to achieve, so that when the market is good for a certain type of use, and if you can accommodate that in your project, then it allows you to create momentum and keep the momentum. The thing about this is, is if it's mixed-use, not the... The uses aren't going to all come up together. They're going to come up at different spurts. This is going to spurt at one time, which is housing. This is going to spurt at another time. I was just tonight, and before I came here, I was looking at my emails in the ULI, which is having their spring meeting in San Diego here shortly. One of the big topics of that is mixed-use areas safer than commercial areas. Commercial areas alone are not as safe without residential. It's kind of an interesting comment. So as we've worked with corporations, we've got a couple of projects in Richmond right now that are starting to build momentum and out in Roanoke. What we've found is that sometimes housing leads, sometimes retail leads, sometimes office leads, but it's usually... Some of these different uses have to have the flexibility to come in. I think one of the differences I see here with this project, and it's not... This is put together a little bit similar to some of the projects in Northern Virginia that have stalled, where the crystal ball, the absolute what the future might look like was asked to be put on paper. And other than setting up the road systems and the infrastructure and saying you want a general mix, it's really hard to predict. I can tell you, everybody's crystal ball. Phil likes to say rip-up plans. All our crystal balls just blew up in 2007. But the good news is, is there is... There are uses and opportunities out there, and there have been... And then this site has a great location. If you group it with Vitawee Golf Course and the opportunities for the housing around, it's one of the largest mixed-use projects in the state of Virginia. And you need to remember, Rome was not built in one day. It takes decades to do it right. So... And clearly, I think there's a great opportunity here, but we've got to be able to make this a place where we can have creative ideas and work together with partners, with the cities. And when we've done that, we've actually had really good successes, and we've taken it and made it a much more open, creative process.
So what do you have right now that's working? You say you've got about eight of these similar throughout the state. What's working?
You familiar with Rocket's Landing in Richmond? Yeah. On the riverfront, right just east of downtown on James River?
Apartments, homes?
It started off as apartments and condos, but now, all of a sudden, then the restaurants came in on the riverfront. And now what's happening is the offices are following, and we're starting to get office out. We just opened two law firms out there. Are you familiar with Ensbroke in the West End? Well, that's a big employment center. It's the opposite. But what's happened is, is we've just started a mixed-use project in the middle of Ensbroke to let it reformat itself, housing and services in there for the employees. What they found is, and actually, this is funded by a REIT, which is Hywood's, which is a stock-market traded REIT. And when they started analyzing their portfolio, they realized that if they really wanted to protect the value of their investment, that they needed to have a product that really fit the lifestyle of the people of the future. And people are wanting to live closer to work. They're going to have to live closer to work if the gas keeps going up like it is. People are wanting to have the convenience of being able to get to their children during the day. People are two people in a family are working, so you have to be able to switch off. So all of these things, this lifestyle, just commuting isn't working. It wouldn't work in this country anywhere. So what's interesting is when... ODU did a study several years ago, and they analyzed the properties in Hampton Roads that were the most... Had the best values in terms of commercial and were the most leased vacancies. It was Town Center, Virginia Beach, Greenbrier, Downtown Norfolk, and City Center, Newport News. Those were the three. And that's because they offer other opportunities to people to work in. That's kind of what we're seeing as a trend.
Thank you. Thank you, Burl. As most of you know, this doesn't show all the housing that was projected. This shows most of it up on the screen there, what Sandler was planning on putting around the project. You can turn that down for me. Thank you. You see, all this, including this in here, was the 1,700-plus unit that Sandler was going to build. So at the time when we came in, we had all this momentum going. This was his first section. This was the section he was working on. And so, you know, we felt like there was going to be a tremendous amount of people. Then you add the 16,000 people that come and go at the community college every day. We said, you know, "Now we got it. We can do restaurants. We can do retail. We can do housing and so forth." Well, you know, you kind of know the story on what happened with Sandler.
Out of that 1,700 projected units that didn't materialize, how many units there now, Bob?
I think he's got, what, close to 300? Do you know, Jamie, how many is out there now?
Fred's showing.
Huh?
Like 275.
How many?
Like 275.
200, 295.
75.
275.
275.
So he's getting close to 300. He's on two and two now. If he sells two, they lay and build two. That's what... In this section over here, they got... They call it the two and two. Sigma out of Atlanta bought the Bank America note, and they got him on a two and two, what they call... You sell two, we let you build two. So it's not... It's going to take a while to build that out at that rate. But we really... That was, you know, the thing that was really going to drive this whole project to Newport, which was a great... It was new housing, good pricing, and so forth. And it was going to really, I think, make us work. We had some chances to put the restaurants and things in, but the apartment project, I think, is going to be our first momentum thing to get the mo going. I think the hotel, and picking up on what Bill said to you earlier, we've done some investigating from the standpoint of health, health facilities, health-related. If you look at Portsmouth, there's very little on that side of town. I think we can probably make health work over there and get some health stuff going in the project. But that's all going to require us to sit down and kind of move some stuff around and set that master plan so we can attract those people in there. So what do we think as far as timeframe to reset this thing and come back with something that we can all work on? Because we don't want to be spending two years saying, "Hand it off to you, and you hand it off to him." I mean... After meeting with Patrick and EDA and so forth, we can have the final... We can have a master redone in 60 to 90 days. Easy.
Define health, Bob, when you say...
We're talking about a property, a merger room with maybe some outpatient surgery type, with doctors' offices over and so forth. You've seen the one out on 17, across from the church?
Mm-hmm.
You know, that... Something like that?
Very nice.
To go in there. And there's a couple of other type of uses from a medical standpoint that have called and are looking for, you know, a couple, three to five acres type thing. So, you know, right now, we can't accommodate them because our master plan says you've got to have, you know, three-story, two-story, this kind of stuff. So hopefully, we're going to be able to pull all this together, talk with EDA, talk with the staff, and come up with something that works for all of us.
Will it lend itself to assisted living facility?
I hope that the new plan will, because there's a demand for that.
Sure.
Patrick, have you guys got anything to comment on this? Have you talked at all about this reformatting this at all?
The city manager and a number of his staff, Mr. Bruce and myself, we've had several meetings with Bob. We look forward to getting with the EDA and keeping the project going forward.
I like it. I'm in favor. You've got to be flexible. I guess my only apprehension about flexibility is, once you get folks committed and they're in there and you sold them on this is what's coming beside you, and they're already there, and then all of a sudden, you switch the game, you know, how much of that liability do we have with not being able to, from a keeping your commitment standpoint? Because the folks over there with Sandler, as well as the golf course and everybody else is probably saying the same thing about what they thought you were going to do. Right. Why they're doing something, so it kind of goes hand-in-hand. There's no doubt about that. No doubt at all. But as Bill said, and also Burl, we've got to have a plan that's a little bit flexible. We have to move something, relocate... We have to move something, relocate something and re-change, or change something so it fits today's market. Whoever we bring in there go understand that when we bring them in.
Can I add one thing?
Yeah.
I mean, this is, you learn when you're doing these things. I mean, it's like at Newport News, they had a road around the fountain, and we realized you couldn't get any buildings up on the fountain. We took the road out of half of it, redid the road system, and we were able to do that. If you look at this, I know we talked about it earlier, but what's, what's one of the most valuable sites on this property?
Is right in there.
Right there. And it's a lake. It's just not the right place for a lake. So that's the kind of creativity, I think, that'll really add value to the whole project.
All right. Yes, sir? Just, just wanted to make sure that we, we stay in the loop as we go on this process and that we don't come back one day, in six days, 90, and now say, here is, here it is. We don't, we don't know where, where we're going. So just keep us in the loop as, as you progress along.
If I, uh. Anywhere along the line, you know, that the council wants a briefing on it, we'd be glad to, you know, give you a briefing on it or invite you to the meeting with the EDA, whatever.
We could be good. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I think the important thing is be consistent in your timing, that you communicate with your public. I was around when this plan first came up.
Right.
And this is a totally different vision of what was presented to the residents during that time.
Right.
And as we've looked at the development, we're thinking that the golf course would be a big thing to help. In the beginning, it was.
Oh, yeah.
But as we looked at things that happened around it, it sort of overshadowed.
Yeah.
The project. I think we're on the right track, but we have to make sure that those residents in those homes that were built, they are to bring about that growth from what it was over there. We have to make sure that they feel as if what they have invested in is truly their life security.
Right.
When you invest in a home, you want to be there. And you want to have some idea of what's going to surround that home. Now, one of the things that I've noticed that it's a strong plus, we have young families with children, and they're working. That says a lot, that are in there. And we can capitalize on that, because they are working with good jobs, then they'll be able to pay for those homes. And so many of them, we're, we're looking at that also.
Mr. Pearl?
Yes, sir. To speak to Paige's comment, it will come back to council.
Mm-hmm. It's got to.
That's, that's a promise. Number two, I think as, as you look at this project, it needs to be market responsive. And I think that's the big message that Bill carried.
Yes, indeed.
He didn't say it, and I don't, I don't want to put words in Bill's mouth, but he felt when we last met, which was last week, that the current plan is not responsive to the market. So you, you've got to be responsive to the market. But you also have to be responsive to your vision. We don't need another suburban shopping center. We've got one across the interstate.
That's right.
With Farm Fresh and.
Well, I think that's what Vice Mayor was referring to. Don't get too far out and come back to us, and we're going, hey, no, hell no.
We can't do it.
We ain't doing that, right.
You can't do it.
Make sure we're in the loop and.
And we're not going to bring you another.
We've got, we've got a $29 million investment here.
That's right.
With Mayor, that we, that we got to protect.
That's exactly right. We've got 29 million already invested in this, so we want to make sure we protect it. Okay. Yes, sir. Mr. Meeks?
So in 90 days or so, we'll be getting another plan or six months down the road or what?
Well, council meets as soon as I meet with EDA.
They're controlling the gas.
And we come up with what everybody's, uh, would like to see in the plan. We like to run that by fire, by, by the council before we go to final plat on it.
Okay.
I mean, we want to bring in like it's a finished deal and you can't change anything.
Right.
Or you can't ask questions about it. So what we like to do is come up with the new uses. Give you an example, we, we got an, a, a office building that we tried to get out there, and we used the, uh, golf course as a, as a lure. And we told him, we put a package together on the golf course and put a pitching wedge in it and all that stuff. And we put in there that we would give him a free golf cart and, and give him a shed to put it in next to the office, if he'd build the office building out there. So we were taking the golf course and using it to promote office development. It, it almost worked, but it didn't work. He didn't have to stay.
You know, the other, other piece there that you touched base on, that the, the Sandler piece was originally projected to be 1,700 houses, and we're at, uh, less than 17% developed. And I know the bank is involved there, but that's not making good use of the resources and the commitment that we made back when that was announced with great fanfare.
Yeah.
Uh, and I don't, I don't guess that question is to you so much, Bob, as it is to staff. What can we do to realize that 1,700 homes and get that, get that built out? Because having the, the feet on the street, having those rooftops, I think, is essential to the success of Newport. And anything that goes in there that's going to require dependency on the customers, if you may.
Mr. Meeks?
Uh, yes, sir. Again, to put words in Bill's mouth, Bill would, would tell you that, uh, earlier this century, a public-private partnership meant that the public sector actually took a checkbook out and made a financial contribution of some fashion. If it was a hotel, the public entity did about 50% of the cost, and that might be free land, the parking, the utilities, the conference room, whatever. Those days have gone by the wayside. I think Bill might tell you that he doesn't get that type of partnership from Newport News. So there's not much financially that you can do, or that I would recommend that you do, to help that component of this project. It's very much going to be driven by the market. It's going to be driven to by the bank, the people who are willing to finance this project, and how quickly can this product sell?
I guess what I'm saying is, and believe me, I'm not advocating putting public money in there, but what, what can we do to get the bank, I guess, to be more aggressively marketing that building to, after you sell to, that's at a, that's at a turtle pace?
They're going to ask you how much you're going to put in, so you're back, you're back to public money again, so.
That's a good question, Bill. And I'm not sure that anybody's going to answer that, because it's all market-driven. It's, it's a matter of risk. I mean, too many people were burned with the recession, the rate recession, and the biggest component of that that was hit was the housing component.
Sure.
Okay, sir. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
The word of the day, flexibility. In 60 days. I'll take both of them away. Thank y'all very much.
That's right.
How quickly it comes back. They, they control the gas on this project.
Yeah.
Hope he's got a heavy foot.
Yes.
Ladies and gentlemen, the next item is a briefing by Patrick on our next enterprise zone application. And Patrick, and Mallory.
I'm going to turn this over to Mallory, our enterprise zone administrator. Thanks, sir.
Great job, Patrick.
Good job. Mallory, can you do that?
Yes. Just put it. Six thousand pounds of air there for America.
He did a great job.
My wife, this, she fell back into society. She brought that down. Members of council, development partners, it's a pleasure to be with you this evening as your local enterprise zone administrator. And I'm here this evening to give you a brief overview and to introduce the concept of a second enterprise zone for the city of Portsmouth. As a little bit of background, as a refresher for some of you, the zone is a state and local partnership. It is the most, one of the most effective methods for stimulating economic development. It has a defined geography. It may consist of up to three non-contiguous areas for any one zone. The city received its current enterprise zone designation in 2010, and it was amended to expand the boundaries and to modify two of the local incentives in 2012. The designation is a 10-year designation with the option of two five-year renewals. So provided we do everything we're supposed to do and the zone is utilized, you're looking at a 20-year life for that enterprise zone. Our current boundaries of the zone incorporate developable areas and areas for revitalization. It includes a geography, and bear with me. There's a small copy. This does not show as a vertical on a PowerPoint. But the current zone stretches from the downtown waterfront to midtown and extends north down the Virginia Avenue industrial corridor. It includes the Victory area and extends down some of the Airline Boulevard industrial area and the Elmhurst and Greenwood Park area, and then includes the Mass Center out here in Churchland.
Now, this has a 2012. This also incorporates the land swap.
Yes, sir.
The boundaries that you came with us.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
When, when we made that application and it was adopted last year, we modified the boundaries. It does complement the city's development plans and strategies, and it does cover 7% of the city's geography, which is the maximum percentage that any one zone is allowed to Example of the current available incentives, again, it's a public-private, it's a public-local partnership, so there are state incentives and city incentives. The state incentives include an investment grant based on real property investment and job grants based on job generation. The annual deadline for submission for those grants is April 1st. So anybody who may have a property investment grant application or a job generation grant application needs to get that to me for my signature before forwarding it to the state on April 1st. Those investment grants can be up to $200,000, depending on the investment threshold that a company or a builder makes. And the job generation grant can be anywhere from $500 to $800 and runs for five years, and those dollar amounts depend on the salaries attached to those jobs. The city's local incentives include the facade loan program administered by our partners at the Redevelopment and Housing Authority, the tax exemption on rehabilitated real estate facilitated through the city assessor's office, development fee rebates that we partner up with our planning department, our engineering department, and our building officials' office to offer, as well as the business personal property investment grant and machinery and tool tax grants. Now, shifting gears to the 20, to, to the next round and the opportunity for us to apply for a second enterprise zone. The state recently announced that there was, they would be holding a round that'll be a competitive process for the 2014 designation. There will be four opportunities available across the Commonwealth of Virginia. The process is competitive and will focus on localities with the greatest level of need, and cities or counties must provide a local incentive package. The city manager has directed Patrick and me to be very aggressive in our application so that it can be competitive. So when we come back to you all in a, in a few months with our application for your endorsement and adoption, we may be very aggressive in those local incentives that we want to put into it.
Any land boundaries that we're looking at wanting to modify, Mallory, or?
Yes, since it will be an entirely separate application, separate and apart from, from this zone, which will stand alone, we do have some proposed boundaries we're tentatively looking at, and I'll show you those maps in one moment.
Just looking here, is this, if I'm saying this right, this Victory piece, this boundary almost covers all of Victory Village, which we just talked about, going down Victory Boulevard. Is that right?
Yes, sir. It covers all of Victory Village with the exception of the community college and the BMPs, because as a state agency, the state can't take advantage of the program, and the BMPs ineligible as well. The application process and information is that the application has the, an applicant has the ability to earn up to 1,500 points. 750 of those points are based on the locality strategy, incentives, and capacity put into the application. The other 750 points are based on a community's distress criteria. The state puts that together, and it is based on the unemployment rate of the locality, the median adjusted gross income, and the percentage of students receiving either a free or reduced lunch in the locality. We already know as a result of the state doing their analysis that Portsmouth will gain 533 points out of this second 750, based on how they rank us on that criteria.
Stand it differently. The max score that we can get is not 1,500, but 1,283 is the sum of 533 points and 750 if we were to max out the first component.
Thank you.
How many other localities have a point system about this amount, 533?
The state ranks 134 cities and counties across the Commonwealth, and 24 have a score higher than our 533. So in essence, they're in worse off or more distressed than we are.
Okay. Any here in Hampton Roads?
I don't believe so. Franklin might be a little higher, however, they already have a joint zone with Isle of White.
We'll check that out, Mallory.
But I'll confirm it.
That's a very good question.
Yes. Sorry.
I think outside of us, it picks up way out in Petersburg. I think we're.
So there's our competition. If those other 24, they start off with a higher base score than us.
Um, now, back to the geographies we may include in this, and these are all very preliminary. We have lots of scrubbing to do on these maps. But the bottom line is, we are focusing on industrial development. We are looking at geographies that would begin at the Frederick Boulevard corridor and carry down south to Elm Avenue and Burton's Point Road, the Penner's Point Connector PMT geography, and West, West Norfolk, just to give you an idea. That's sort of taking it from Deep Creek Boulevard down Frederick Boulevard. And then this piece here is contiguous and jumps to that sort of beige color at the top there, and then carries us down here.
Now, recall that you can have three discontinuous, non-continuous areas. So the three areas that we're talking about don't join.
Okay. Similar to how these three don't. So those two slides represent the first contiguous area. Again, we have some scrubbing to do, because we would not include some government property that's along here.
Show where the Jordan Bridge is.
The Jordan Bridge cuts through here. Then the Penner's Point PMT geography, and then bringing it out to the West Norfolk industrial area there. With that in mind, and I apologize, there is one typo on here. These are some of the incentives we may look at putting in this application. This last one here is not part of your current package. That's an error on my part that I didn't catch until just now, so I apologize. The other three are incentives that are in the initial zone and the current zone. These are some of the things we'll explore for this application.
Any questions on that slide?
Well, now, I just want to know, how, what do we have to do to be competitive? I mean, what, how much? I guess talk a little bit about the scrubbing that you're going to do to try to outdo the other 24.
The competition is right there on that slide. That's, we've got, remember, 750 points is already determined. We've got 533 of those. The remaining 750 is how strategic, how innovative, how aggressive our local incentive program is. And so, as Mallory just said, the first three errors.
Which will be our weakest area, because if we're going to incentivize, we need something incentivized.
Well.
Right now, we don't have nothing but land, right?
Well, no, that's not true.
Okay, talk.
What we do, we provide grants. It's, they pay the tax and then we give it back to them.
Okay.
And that's a period of five years. And that's not too shabby.
Yeah, no, okay.
And the same is true.
Like a TIF.
But take it down to, we're adding more to the mix here. We're adding real estate tax. So this is, uh, these are good incentives. Think about your business being, from a local perspective, tax-free for five years.
But those other 24 localities can do the same thing. I was asking, what, what could we? I was asking, what could we do, or do we think we got any leg up?
Well, that's why these are preliminary, and that's why we want to do a real aggressive program. But we want to give you an idea of where we stand today, because we still have time to work on this.
So you're going to come back to us with suggestions?
Absolutely. Here it is, right here.
In fact, the state just made, announced this round of applications a month ago. They held their first workshop, they've held a workshop for local staff to attend last week. I was in Richmond for that, missed the EDA meeting for that very reason. We'll spend the rest of this month in April doing all of our scrubbing and research, and then we will be back in front of you all in May with a proposal for your consideration. And then we will work with you all to hold a public hearing in early June so that we can make the application June 28th by the deadline.
Now, of our three areas that we're looking at, the Burton's Point and Frederick and Penner's Point, is it possible we just get one of those three, or how do they score?
That's, one zone may have three disconnected areas. So those three areas still only count as one zone.
Just like the current zone has three discontinuous areas. They're not contiguous. This one zone will have three component parts that don't touch. So it's not pick one. This is our application.
Just to expand on that just a little, it's allowed to be 7% of the city geography in any one zone May, which is 1,344 acres in Portsmouth. So between those three geographies, we can pick up as much as 1,344 acres for this application.
Can, do you index the incentives according to the number of jobs, number of capital dollars invested?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah, what we get out of this is, is jobs, and that's the most important.
Absolutely.
And then with those jobs becomes disposable income, and then back up, machinery and tools. But getting jobs is really very...
Okay, thank you. Good job.
Do something with water as an incentive?
Okay.
I guess it depends on the user, whether it matter, but I'm thinking it's something we control.
And if you think of an idea separate apart from this meeting, let us know. All right, the next item is streetscape plan on Frederick. I want to share with you an event that we talked about, and that was the last meeting in November, a meeting that was my first meeting coming back. And you were talking about a consultant study in here. You made the point that we do an awful lot of studies that end up on the shelf, and they don't get implemented. Well, tonight, we're going to tell you about a study that was done eight years ago that planted the seeds for what's going on here. And oftentimes, it takes that long. I mean, MacArthur Memorial or MacArthur Mall was an idea that was first talked about in 1971, '72, and you know when that came online. But we have a project here that we're ready to pull the trigger on and implement. All we need is your blessing, which you can give tonight. So Fred...
Do it.
All right, thank you, Fred.
Good job, Fred.
Thank you, Mr. Rowe. Fairright Vice Mayor, Chair members of council, ladies and gentlemen. As John said, it's not often that I get to do this. Usually, it's a comprehensive plan. It's a zoning ordinance. It's something we're saying you will see in 20 years. Tonight, I get to say, okay, let's do it and have it finished this year and be something that will improve the city. If you remember, in 2005, actually in the fall of 2005, as John said, we planted the seeds for this type of development with the WRT first plan for the midtown area. And if you look in that plan, you'll see a page that had some tracks of land along Frederick Boulevard that we were saying, this is where we want to provide a buffer, not a linear park, because it's not that big, but a buffer for those properties. We then came back and said, to do that, we're going to have the corridor and gateway study. And that showed, again, how we would like to have this area developed. We then took it one step further in the spring of 2008 and came up with the Frederick Boulevard demonstration project, where we actually looked at how we were going to be dressing this area up. And that was a project that was not only with council, but it was with the urban design group that we had, the council had created to work with, planning on these projects. Well, we looked at this area here, really, it's Frederick Boulevard. It's kind of in four phases, but we're saying one phase is 1A, but it looks at this area right now as what we want to do as Phase 1. That's where we're...
To get you oriented, right under Phase 2 is Walmart.
Okay. Future Kroger marketplace site. So this is an area that is, got the development push right now to do something. And as we said, with the Kroger coming in and saying, here is what we would like to do, and if you remember at our last council meeting, we were talking about the extensive landscaping that they're providing, they've come back to even support us by saying, we'll support your Frederick Boulevard project to the tune of $65,000. They're going to pay up to $65,000 to do the median. This is what we are proposing to be happening along Frederick Boulevard from Turnpike to Scott. Right here is Walmart. And the idea is...
You had that backwards. Oh, switch. Where's 264?
264 is right here.
This way.
And this here is going to be the Kroger marketplace site.
Yeah, Fred's going from south to some on your left, north to some on your...
And the idea is to create some connections with other projects that are going on. If you notice, we're including a wide pedestrian path. That wide pedestrian path actually will be tying in to a similar path that the Housing Authority created for the Seaboard Square on the south side of Turnpike. So we're starting to link projects that either are out there to be built or projects that have been built. We're starting to link them together. One of the things that we would like to do is part of this is get this momentum going, get it started, and then we can point to this, we can point to the Chick-fil-A, who's, if you've seen their landscaping, is amazing right now, and start saying, guys, this is what we want to see throughout the entire district. And we feel like we are taking the step forward to say, we're holding ourselves to that same example.
Where's that Chick-fil-A at? Down here, over there. Okay, opposite. So we're not going that far down?
Not that far down right now, but that would be in the next phase, and we would be looking at doing some work in the median strip to be complementing this as well as what they've done there.
What about backing up on the Phase 1A, going back to the interstate? You know, there's been quite a few conversations, there's some property owners right there where the old, is it the Parker?
Parker Fuel, yes, sir.
Yeah, that guy's been trying to sell there two years. He calls every other week about if he could just get a break in that median strip, he could sell that piece of property and...
We feel like that this is giving us the momentum to go ahead and start planning. Is there going to be a need for a curb cut there or median cut there? If so, how should it be developed? And then develop the plans. And the thing that I think is really exciting about this is, is the railroad your boundary? No. George Washington Highway is your boundary. So all of a sudden, you have your George Washington to High Street, your entire run of Frederick. We start working from the middle and going both directions.
Fred, go back two slides, please, to the area. Again, Phase 1, and that's the project that you just saw, is this area right here. Phase 1A, what the mayor's talking about is here. And as Fred will tell you, there is a fourth phase, which is to go further south from the interstate to GW. So we have, we have a chance now to pull the trigger on Phase 1, and that's what our focus is tonight.
The reason we've got that chance to pull the trigger...
That's because we own all that property on the other side and all that.
On that. And we've been working for that, purchasing that property. It's not been something that's been easy. We've purchased seven of the eight properties. One's left, and we can work this plan around that one property until, you know, the buyer becomes willing or the property becomes available. We created some estimated cost. What's it going to cost to do this? Plants, the road, everything that goes into it. And we feel like $455 is a reasonable estimate for the median as well as the west side.
$455,000.
I was getting before I prepared to thank you. Now, we've been able to start looking at different funding sources. Instead of saying, I don't have the money here because this funding source is not full, why don't we combine funding sources so we can get to a project and have that project completed? CIP budget, there's some funds there. CDGBG budget, there are funds there because this would be meeting the national objective for pedestrian improvements. Economic development funding and Kroger participation. All of a sudden, we have taken funding sources actually from federal, you know, local, private matches, so to speak, to come up with the same $455,000. So we feel like that we've been able to create a project that we can do, and as I said, we can do this year. If you say pull the trigger, then we're ready to go pretty much with an RFP out on the streets April 1st. 30 days, get it back in, evaluate it, award it, May 15th, get the plans back, July 1st, put it out for bid, August, have it finished back and award the bids in September, and have the project for Phase 1 finished by mid-November. I mean, that's a fast-paced project with what we're doing.
Now, what is the likelihood you're going to get that $300,000 from the CDGB money?
We feel like that's fairly good, and it's, what it is, is we've actually been, as we've been going through scrubbing the CDGB funds, because of other activities, we're finding that there is some program income that's there that needs to be spent.
Because that whole program is looked at being cut on the federal level, or it has been for years.
This is funds that are there and existing in the pot right now.
Oh, really?
Yes, sir. We had a lot of projects that didn't make it. We had some that didn't make it all the way. They didn't need all the money.
So we can take all that and put it...
So we're putting it all together, and since it does meet that national objective, we feel like we're able to take that and use that for that project.
The one house, what's, is a hurdle that we can talk about or...
Go back to the landscape.
The guy may be watching the tele...
Show Mel where it is.
You may get him another $100,000.
We feel that it's an occupied house, and we can work the plan around it. When we buy it, we need to buy it at a fair price, and we don't need to pay an inflated price, and we don't need to pay relocation expense either. So it'll come to us in due time.
Yes, ma'am.
I love this, and I don't want to play Debbie Downer.
Okay.
But I recall a year or so worth of meetings some years ago when some work was initially done on Frederick and Airline, and we had to put the flags up and some big pots for plants and things like that. And then everything went south and looked ugly and got hit by cars and wasn't maintained. Please tell me this is all maintainable.
It is, and let me show you how.
Our last slide, we have some...
Look at the last bullet.
Include maintenance costs in the 2014-15 budget. And we're not proposing the flags, and we're not proposing an irrigation system. And we're not proposing those types of things that are expensive. We're proposing a very well-designed system that has plants that Meg and her group can work with and maintain that. Because it's no good for us to spend this money and then a year from now, trash...
Dead plants.
Dead plants, everything like that. I mean, it sends the worst signal that we could do.
And that's what happened before.
And we need to include that in the budget.
You hear me, Steve Whitehead? No. But it was bad.
Yes.
That's great.
You know, like I said, we're trying to look at this as moving in both directions and trying to get this project so that it continues on in 2014, 2015. And people, as you see progress going on with these projects like this, then they start getting excited and the energy.
Now, tell me, I like it, but what are we taking from, if we're going to take all that money and squirrel it over here to do this?
Back it up.
What areas of the city is not going to be able to get a benefit from that CDVG? Unprogrammed.
Unprogrammed income.
Okay, so nothing's hurt.
So nothing's hurt.
All right, good.
This is coming from Kroger.
Got it.
It's not ours.
That was gateway money anyway.
And it was gateway money that we already had planned in there, and the economic development funding is to support the business, and I can't think of, right now, better business to support with Kroger coming along for that small amount of money.
Okay, sounds good. I'm in.
Is everybody in?
Go.
Tomorrow.
Thank you, Fred.
Thank you, sir. Good job.
The next, the next item is a briefing on our downtown utility project and a unique, a very unique opportunity that we have here. And we want to see this opportunity for maybe another 50 to 100 years, and that's not hot verbally. Part of the work is causing us to mess up the sidewalks, and so we're going to talk about that tonight.
Brian, you know, Ms. Ida K. just wrote about you this weekend, and some of our businesses that were disturbed and reiterated some things that we talked about in here.
Well, she didn't blame us.
She's right on the pulse, so what's going on?
That's true, but if you also, remember, she doesn't blame the workers, so...
No, she does not. You're right, you're right.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, and members of council, ladies and gentlemen. I'm here, I'm just going to give a very brief presentation. I've been here before you several times as we've talked about our downtown master plan project, which is under construction. And what we want to talk to you tonight is, like Mr. Rowe said, we have an opportunity to replace all of the sidewalks in the project area, and that's what we want to talk about. Just very briefly, remind you about the project. It's to replace all the water and sewer lines and the storm sewer lines in that 16-block area. Remember, we're talking about south of High Street, east of Washington, 16-block area. As a result, we've got, we're removing all the curb and gutters and replacing it with concrete. So there's a whole, there's a mixture. We've got concrete now, there's granite, there's slate. And so we are going back and to improve the drainage flow through the whole area is a concrete curb and gutters is what's going back. To install that, we have to go behind the curb, the new curb line, a certain distance to install that, and so what, you know, three to four feet in areas, and that's what's going to be disturbed. And so this project was not designed, it was not intended to be a streetscape project. So what you have is you'll have a small portion of new sidewalk, and then you'll have what's there now. So this gives you, this is actually the project area. This is standing at the intersection of Washington and County, looking west on County Street towards Effingham. This is the new curb that's already been put in place. This is the existing sidewalk, and you can see where they've cut down the joint, and so right now, you've got existing on the right side of that slide and what the new's going to be. So that gives you, hopefully, a good visual image of what we're talking about. What our recommendation is, is to remove and replace all of the sidewalks in the area in, replace in kind, meaning if it's concrete, we put concrete back. If it's brick, we put the brick back. Why do we want to do that? A lot of those sidewalks are in very poor condition. There are safety hazards, trip hazards, it's cracked up in some of the brick sections, especially, for example, on Dinwiddie Streets, very uneven. It's low construction cost, the construction market that we're in now. You've already got a contractor that's mobilized, already going to be doing part of the work anyway. We will never be able to come back and do it for as cheap as we can do it today. Plus, we feel that afterwards, you'll get a lot of citizen complaints. Why didn't you go ahead and replace the whole thing when you had the chance, when you were tearing up everything? And like Mr. Rowe said, this opportunity, it only comes once in a generation or more, probably even once in a lifetime, to an infrastructure project of this magnitude, and this is something that should be done and will last for a long, long time, and it will greatly improve the appearance...
And it will greatly improve the appearance of this area.
Safety.
And safety. Here's a good example, I believe this is on King Street. You can see part of the sidewalk is all cracked and broken up. And the other piece to keep in mind is that some of the sidewalk, depending on what street you're on, you have sidewalks that are 10, 12 feet wide, and you're only gonna replace a certain portion of them if we don't, if we don't go with this recommendation.
King's got that granite curb there as well, right?
This is slate, this is actually slate, yeah, and you can see, you can see how uneven it is. It's not level. That's part of what contributes to our, the drainage flow in these, on these streets because you don't have a uniform flow line. Again, you can see breaking up in the sidewalk. This is actually, this is on Court Street. And this is a good example of like what you would have in the sense that you've got more new and old. So if we come back with what's designed, this is sort of, you'll have a sort of a patchwork of new concrete, existing concrete, and where, so we have areas that may be cracked and so forth, and then you'll just have little slivers next to the street. And so this is a good way to avoid having something in that fashion. For example, the brick, in a lot of places, you actually have missing brick in a lot of places, what's, it's just disappeared or things have happened through the years. Again, this is that uneven slate curbing. So what we would...
And that's next to the curb. We've got places where it's on the backside of the sidewalk, which would be out of the project area. So it makes no sense to replace the front edge and ignore the back edge.
Right. And so what we would do with the brick is we would remove, if you, again, if you agree with our recommendation, we would actually pull up all of the brick. We would regrade and level the area and then reinstall the brick that was pulled up. And then we would replace brick and fill in where brick was missing. So you would have a nice, uniform, level sidewalk. So what are we talking about cost? Just to give you an idea, again, order of magnitude, this project is right at $10 million, just a shade under $10 million. That's what the cost of this project is currently. The additional cost to remove and replace the concrete sidewalks, and again, put back with concrete, is about $350,000. For the brick, we're gonna remove, again, we're gonna remove, we're gonna level, we're gonna reinstall the existing brick, and then we're gonna replace missing brick where there, in areas where there's missing brick. That's about $460,000. The reason that's more, it's much more labor-intensive and takes a lot longer to do the brick side than does the concrete. So combined, you're talking about $810,000. So you're talking less than 10% of what the project costs currently. How do you pay for it? The recommendation is a one-time use of fund balance from your general fund. And what we'll do, and I've discussed this with Mr. Rowe, is he would include that in his budget proposal that he's getting ready to present to you in a few weeks. But what we would do is we'd use existing project funds now and get started. We wouldn't wait for you all to adopt the new budget. But in that new budget, if you approve of this option, we would just do the mechanics of taking your appropriation, the new budget, to reimburse the project for those expenses.
See, what we're doing is split funding. The utility fund should not carry the full cost. It should carry what was originally programmed. The additional cost would go to the general fund. But we have enough money in the budget to go ahead and start the work, and then we'll backfill in next year's budget.
How much you talking about? 800, the $800,000 coming out of the general fund?
No, no, sir.
The $350,000 plus the $460,000?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I misunderstood what you said.
Yes, the $810,000 would come out of the general fund. That's the additional, the utility project is already paying for the new curb and the piece, the part that we are disturbing and having to put back. So if I could, for example, let me go back. Utility fund would be paying from here over to the street, and all of this residual on every street and every block is what this additional expense represents.
And see, the general, the utility fund could carry the whole cost, but it shouldn't. We got the funds to do it.
I guess my only reservation is we also have needs in our neighborhoods and recreation facilities, John, and things like that. And to take $800,000 out of that and pluck it there and don't invest in these neighborhoods like we've been talking the last several years, how bad a hit are we gonna take there? That's a big chunk to take out of that reserves we got there.
That's a very good point. And we are doing sidewalks in neighborhoods. As you, if you've gone down River Shore Road, where you've just laid new sidewalk, picking up at the schools and going door. We have a tremendous need for sidewalks. But we have a very unique opportunity here in the sense that the mobilization cost is already covered. We got the contractor on the scene. It's cheaper now than it will be in the future to do this work. We will be making the sidewalks safer, even for the existing brick sidewalk. I mean, there are so many different changes and elevations that we pay for it in fall-down cases.
We've had a lot of trip and fall cases, reference sidewalks. But to the mayor's point, we also got neighborhoods that when there's a rain...
The rains, they can't even get to the house.
They gotta take their shoes off to get to their house. So how do we balance this with that? I think that has a higher degree of urgency.
Well, they're already accusing us of spending all the money downtown and not in the neighborhood. Here we are again downtown in mostly areas that are non-residential, and...
I agree.
They're gonna take another hit.
Well, you guys need to tell us what to do. Our recommendation is to do it because it's the cheapest that you'll ever get it done. And it makes a lot of sense.
You won't be back doing, down here again for 100 years.
And these are, these are all good points. If I had enough money, I'd be recommending that we do sidewalks everywhere.
And that guy getting flooded is thinking, "You're not gonna be back in his neighborhood for another 100 years."
And that water is coming up in some of the houses.
Yeah, I think I'd like to see, again, this, and I keep saying this, our budget, how this whole thing fits before we keep going doing these piecemeal approvals and don't have money to do some things that we desperately need to be doing in our neighborhoods. I mean, it's just, yeah, it just makes a lot of sense looking this in isolation. Put it with these other areas.
This is a neighborhood, though.
You have overlay of the, I'm sorry. You have overlay of the blocks, kind of, then I think everybody will see if the houses are apartments.
We can, we don't have it in this show. Can you get that so that we can, you have it on a plaque?
I can run, I think I got one, might one have downstairs if I can run down and get it.
We have one more item to go. You might want to have a little time of discussion with your partners here at the table. And we do have one item for a closed session. It's an economic development issue.
I have one question for you on this. Have you factored in, if you can't safely remove those bricks, you have to buy out new ones? What happens if you can't safely remove the bricks and use, what's the additional cost?
That's the least expensive cost.
Right. If that were, I mean, I would have to revisit that number. It includes, obviously, because we have missing bricks, but we're all, we've already, in just this area where we've had to do at the intersection, we've already removed bricks and they've stacked them up.
So they come, no problems?
But that's not, it's like any, I mean, will some need to be replaced? I'm absolutely sure of that.
Can you go back to the one right there in front of Patty O'Brien's thumpers? Yeah. On the other side of the street, that's brick, right? And this side is concrete? Why are we doing this, are we gonna get somewhat of, if we decide or not decide? Some consistency or uniform?
Either concrete or brick.
Yeah, either. Concrete both sides or...
It depends on what side of the street the utilities are. It does make sense if you're only on one side to jump across the street, then you really are...
Okay, so you're only doing the, you're only doing the 16 blocks that you still, that you tell...
We are only doing where we're disturbing it.
But I think to answer your question, it's like for like. So for example, to use your example, if Patty O'Brien's side has brick, we're gonna pull the brick up, put the brick back, replace any holes if there are missing bricks. And on this side of the street, it's concrete, so we would put concrete back. That's, that's what was priced.
Yeah, but his question was, are we gonna try to get consistency on those side of the streets?
Yeah, I mean, could we concrete that side or brick this side?
Right, right. And that's not, yeah, I understood the question, but it's not, the pricing in the number we gave you does not anticipate adding brick where there's great, where isn't, or vice versa.
All right, what we're gonna do, we're gonna see if we have a plaque that shows the hole. And then you do need to give us some direction tonight.
And I wonder why we're gonna make that decision tonight?
Well, because the contractor's on the scene. And if we're gonna tell him to do the work, he either needs to know whether or not to do half the sidewalk or the full sidewalk, we're at that point.
So... Well, are the sidewalks torn up because of the road construction? I mean, is this, is this a luxury or is this a necessity?
This is not, what I'm recommending to you is not a luxury. When you've got sidewalks that are...
They're already cut to there, Bill.
Yeah, well, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, they're already have cut because of the bikes.
I mean, that's a no-brainer. That has to be addressed. But I'm not certain about all the...
Let's make sure we have an understanding where we are. This is the project boundary right here, okay? That's part of the project. That's part of the $9.8 million. Okay, visualize if this sidewalk had fractures, you're gonna end up with a new sidewalk here and junk over here. And I'm not, this is not hyperbole. You're gonna end up with what really looks good and what really looks rundown and creates a safety hazard. That's why we're bringing it to you. It's not about luxury, it's about...
But you're always gonna have that in an old city, John. I mean, to use a cliche that Richard Hartman used to say, with the paving of the streets, somewhere you're gonna stop paving, and then those people are gonna complain because theirs aren't new, like the guy on the other side of the street. So you can use that analogy all over the city. Somewhere, you're still gonna have old bumping up to new.
That's a very good point, but...
I mean, because the guy who gets the asphalt in front of his neighborhood is tickled to death, but right where he stops, then that guy's gonna call and say, "Why did y'all stop here?"
It's a little bit different when you're riding down a right-of-way in a car and you're riding, you're walking it on your, you know, with your feet. You have a greater chance of having a hazard here than you do in the street.
So you wanna take from where you got cut out now, all the way back over to there, take the whole thing out and replace it on all 16 blocks?
Correct.
And that's our recommendation. But if you wanted to do something else, that's, that's, you need to tell us.
Again, I told you where my concern is. We got neighborhoods, recreational facilities, stuff rundown, people keep coming to us, we keep saying, "Next, next, next." And now we wanna take $800,000. If you tell me we can do that and go in those neighborhoods and fix all those things and get these recreational facilities, then I'm all in favor. But if you can't tell me we can do it...
You cannot do that.
Okay, okay, I got a problem with it, man.
Question?
Yes, sir.
If we don't do the sidewalk, sooner or later, we'll have to do it, right?
Yeah, you do.
So right in there, as far as expenses are concerned?
It's the cheapest ever. Because again, the contractor's mobilized, the contractor's on the scene. We know what the unit prices are. If we do it a year from now, we gotta pay the mobilization expense for the contractor, we gotta pay whatever the costs are at that particular point in time. So this is, it's a, it's a coincidental situation.
So you're gonna run and get something while we go on to the next item and then...
If you had other questions.
Oh, yes, sir.
Is it, I mean, is it possible for the council to, I mean, individually tomorrow and look at it so they actually can see the difference in what you're talking about versus... Because I think if you see some of the defects, I think you'll be like, "Well, I can see a trip and fall, that's 20 grand," and this and that.
Most of the, most of us have probably seen it. I've seen it.
Walk it every day. I mean, we've been walking.
I think what, you know, obviously, is a trip and fall hazard certainly needs to be addressed. That, that piece is a no-brainer due to the road construction, that needs to be addressed. But to put it in perspective, we've got another study that, that seed hasn't sprouted. That's our flood study that some of you are familiar with. I think we're in the second edition of that. But the price tag on that's a half a billion dollars. And to date, since that was done, we haven't put a dollar into it. And we've got people, people on Summit Avenue, we got people in Ebony Heights...
Rowboats.
That have to literally sometimes almost get a rowboat, Marlene. So I just think we're gonna come in for a lot of criticism spending that kind of money
You're putting new curbs, new gutters, pavement...
Pipes.
Pipes.
Drainage, sewer. I mean, this is, this is a hundred-year...
This is just Phase 1. You're gonna do that in every phase when they bring it back? You got another $800,000 to do it in the next phase and the next, how many phases do we got, four? Okay, this is just a piece. So in one phase, you're gonna take $800,000 out?
Well, it might be clever enough, after seeing this, to build it into the bid from the utility fund for Phase 2, 3, and 4.
Or, I mean, everybody talks about facelift. I mean, this definitely can give a better look.
And again, this is, this is not a stock photograph. This is a photograph of one of our sidewalks.
Where's that sidewalk?
I believe, I believe that's King Street.
Walk them every day.
I'll walk them every day. I ain't fail yet, but...
And let's say that the project boundary is right here. So you got new sidewalk here, you got, you got this. You got tough choices, that's what... How cool is it gonna be when someone goes out there and say, "What in the world were they thinking about?" When they, they polished the front of the shoes, but look at the, look at the heels, look how rundown they are. So you have, you know, you got a dilemma, folks. My recommendation, but I might, you know, if you decide otherwise, that's, that's fine. The contractor is out there, he's ready to start doing the work within the project area. We need to let him know. We do have time for you to consider it, and we can bring it back tomorrow evening, but...
Is there any consideration for using the funds in the utility fund to do this?
We can. But as I said, this is a, this typically is a general fund area here.
I hear you, I hear you about the typically.
And you can make the decision to use utility funds for this. We're not doing this work because it's a sidewalk project. We're doing this work because it's a utility project. And I could in good conscience sleep at night if you used utility funds.
Well, and wouldn't you maybe, now that this has presented itself as a way to, as you start bidding the other 2, 3, and 4 in the future, make that part of your bid process?
And if we can use the utility funds, I would say, let's use the utility funds. You know, a situation like that is a trip and fall hazard, and those of us who've been here, while we've paid out quite a bit of money...
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
On settlements.
You don't want people hurt. I mean, it's, we don't even want them to go to court and have to settle.
The utility fund, everybody's okay with that?
Yes.
John, how much, you were talking about taking all of it from the general fund?
Yeah.
All of it came from there.
Well, I'm not in favor of patching this thing. I mean, we're gonna do it, let's do it, let's do it right. Do it right the first time if we're gonna do it. Try to come back, come back three, four, five years from now.
Do it with a utility fund.
Utility fund.
Got it.
Good job.
All right, we have four. Do you have an ordinance on the agenda tomorrow evening that relates to this year's budget? As you know, our budget approaches nearly a half a billion dollars. We start working on the budget more than a year and a half before the end of the budget. And so from time to time, we do need to make transfers. We have circumstances that we don't anticipate 18 months in advance. For example, new revenue that may come in that has to be re-appropriated. So I wanted Carol to explain what makes up the ordinance that you're gonna consider tomorrow, tomorrow evening. A lot of the money is new revenue that's coming in that you have to appropriate. Carol?
Thank you. As Mr. Rowe said, the ordinance that is being presented to you for consideration tomorrow night makes some mid-year adjustments to the existing budget. About 40% of... About 40% of the total general fund adjustments relate to additional revenues that we're asking council to appropriate. The largest of those is the state share of the Virginia Sports Hall of Fame, $500,000, which will be appropriated on both the revenue and the expenditure side, so that's a wash. We also have received reimbursements for two public safety-related areas. One is mutual aid that the police department supplied, and the other is reimbursed...
Back up on the sport. I was having a sidebar.
We received $500,000 from the state of Virginia.
Just pass-through, not...
It's pass-through money, and that money was not appropriated with the fiscal '13 budget. So this is just appropriating both sides of that state fund. We received reimbursement for mutual aid, and we also received reimbursement from FEMA for expenses related to Hurricane Sandy. Both of those, we have some expenditures that are related to those efforts, but both of those expenditures are less than the amount of revenue that we're getting.
Yay!
Yeah.
That sounds fabulous.
This is really interesting. They put on a national convention for the two major parties. You can imagine that it takes a lot of security, and so the call goes out. If you're within a certain radius, can you respond and help us to provide security? And so one of the national conventions was in Charlotte, almost in our backyard. So the call goes out to public safety departments within a certain region. Can you help deploy troops there to make this a safe place? And we did that. And so we're getting some $33,000 back.
Thirty-four thousand?
Thirty-three thousand, four hundred.
Yeah. And so that's the revenue side. Our expense was...
$516 in travel costs.
We need another convention. We need a revenue review.
Do that all the time.
The other items, the largest of the other items that we're asking council to appropriate is debt service costs that were underbudgeted in the existing fiscal year '13 budget, and that's $652,000. We also have some costs related to the constitutional officers and the treasurer... excuse me, and the city registrar. Most of that relates to vacancy savings that was budgeted, and for those offices, they really don't tend to generate vacancy savings because they're state-funded, and if they have vacancies, the state will usually let them move that money to other part-time or other position costs.
How about the $600,000 that was... you're saying it was underbudgeted for...
Yes. The city administration at the time the budget was put together had planned to do a restructuring of one of the city's pieces of debt, but in looking at that, it wasn't financially advantageous to the city to do that. It would have produced one-year savings, but would have had a long... over the long term, would have cost us more than we would have saved. So the $652,000 is a net result after taking into account the refundings that we just did in...
Not doing it.
Yes. And we've... and just so you know, we've made all these corrections in the proposed budget that will be coming to you shortly. And the final item is just a timing difference. We, as you know, we have several civic organizations we provide funding to. The H.E.R. Shelter requested funding from the city, but they were late in requesting it last year. They submitted it to us after the city's books had already closed. So you actually ended up with $9,800 that went into fund balance last year, and we're just asking that that be re-appropriated so that we can make five payments to them this year instead of four.
Back to the H.E.R. Shelter.
Right, and these are nonprofits, and if they have a staff member that goes out, often it's a one-person or two-person shop. And so if their person that puts in the drawdown request is not at work, their focus is on mission, not on that. And so this is just a re...
Yeah.
Again, kind of a housekeeping thing.
And it makes them whole because they probably were looking for that money.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, I have a problem with that.
And so those are the general fund changes. And then on the health insurance side, we're making the adjustment, but there's $700,000, and that's because the... there were costs related to the city's contribution to retirees' health insurance that had not been budgeted, and there's enough money in the health insurance fund fund balance to pay for that cost for this year. And again, we've corrected these items in the fiscal '14 budget beyond.
How much is that, $700,000?
Yes, sir.
There's about $3 million in the fund balance there.
Speaking while we're on the subject of the H.E.R. Shelter, how about the other nonprofits? That's always a very scrutinized piece of the budget, even though it's a relatively small piece. But are we going to sit down... usually, we sit down, we get a list of what we funded last year, and we've pretty much been status quo for the past probably five years. But want to make sure that we've got the Portsmouth nonprofits taken care of.
I think it was about $300,000 or $350,000 that we went through. You're not talking about that now, you're just talking about backfilling the piece that they missed. We'll still do that again this budget cycle. Sit down with those and make sure we distribute those funds.
And we're talking about the nonprofits, and I think you're talking about the fine arts grants that were...
No, finance and nonprofits. It's all in there together. That whole thing was about $350,000.
I can tell you that the nonprofits, there wasn't a request for any additional money, and we can balance the budget and keep them whole as far as next year is concerned. But this, again, is a timing issue.
Yeah, I understand.
We're okay with that. I think we're okay there.
Well, I wanted to make sure that you had an explanation of what's before you tomorrow night.
Okay.
Any questions?
No, thank you.
Thank you, Carol. Good job. I think it's okay to invite your partners into the closed session because it is an economic development issue, if you would like, and if you want to have a public discussion of anything that you heard tonight, you have the time, certainly.
Yes, ma'am.
Can I ask one question? You may divert it to close, but I'm going to ask a question here. The item on our agenda tomorrow night for the contribution to the no tolls lawsuit...
Okay.
Do you want me to ask that question now or later?
You can ask it now, since you... I don't think... Well, I mean, I will defer to my colleague.
I have no problem in discussing it openly.
Yeah, neither do I.
I'm just curious, is it coming through the EDA or is it coming... the way it reads on the agenda, it looks like it's coming from us.
Well, the agenda, the item that's on your agenda was drafted a while back, and that was drafted with the idea that it might come through the city. And it basically leaves your options open. If you notice, it's very generally worded. It doesn't say where it's going, who it's going to, whether it's going to the no tolls organization, whether it's going to litigate to the attorneys, whether it's going to EDA, or whether it's just going to put, you know, to put up placards someplace. It's for councils to use to oppose, to support the litigation opposing the tolls.
What's at issue here is Virginia is a Dillon Rule state. And the Dillon Rule is that ruling that came out of the 19th century, out of the Midwest, where a judge said, "If you don't have the power delegated to you by the General Assembly, either in your charter or by state statute, you can't do it." And the opposite of that is home rule, where you can do anything you want to. Well, Virginia's not a home-rule state. So when you decided, "We want to help the plaintiffs," then we had to look, what... is there a vehicle for getting this done? And George found a very, very old attorney general's opinion that said you can't do it.
It was from 1960, but it's out there, and it didn't have any real authority to it. And because of that, I, you know, I always like to be on the best ground, the firmest ground possible, because I don't want... we don't want people to come back and criticize or say what you did was improper. So I polled my colleagues with the local government attorneys group and got some good comments, but the overall comment I got was, "If there's some other way you can do it, then see if you can do it." And I had already been thinking in terms of perhaps the EDA doing it, because they have powers that the city doesn't have, and their powers are given to them under statute by the General Assembly. And we don't have... the city itself doesn't have those specific grants of power. And as John mentioned, the... under the Dillon Rule, if you're not specifically granted a power, you don't have it unless it's absolutely necessary for you to carry out one of your core functions. And there was enough gray area for the council funding the lawsuit directly. Enough... there was enough concern on my part. When you've got a clear vehicle for doing it, why not use the vehicle? And because EDA and the city are set up to work together, that this just seemed better for the EDA to go ahead. And I don't know if the other council members, if all the council members are aware, they adopted a resolution at their last meeting by which they agreed to contribute... to allocate $50,000 towards the same purpose, towards the... towards opposition to the tolls. And that was for them, for the $50,000 that council had discussed in previous meetings to make sure that that would get there. So it's either going through the EDA or from the council, but there's not going to be two $50,000 going to the lawsuit.
They'll just be the vehicle to get us all on a more legal ground and make him and the rest of us more comfortable with infringing on it.
Ms. Mayor, so whatever we voted on in regards to what we were going to do is for is supporting the legality of...
Still going to happen.
See, your last resolution that you did vote on and did adopt opposed the tolls and supported the litigation. That's still a valid resolution.
This is just a vehicle.
What's on the agenda tomorrow is to do what the mayor brought up at the last meeting was, we need to have something to appropriate the money.
$50,000.
$50,000. You can appropriate this $50,000 tomorrow, still not spend it. That just gives you authority to spend it.
So the disbursement of the money, how it will be dispersed, hasn't been determined? Is that accurate?
That's correct.
So we're going to make an undetermined appropriation?
No, you're going to make an appropriation for $50,000.
To what? To who? To what?
To oppose the litigation. In support of opposition to the litigation.
To EDA? It can be. Let me...
Well, let me just say, I'm a truth-in-plane Dillon kind of guy. So let's just, you know, if EDA is going to do it, let's just say they're going to do it. But this sounds like it doesn't say who, what, when, where, or how. We're just throwing $50,000 up in the air, and it's going to get there magically.
And that was not... the intention was to give you the options to direct where the money went.
All right, well, let's decide right now where we want the money to go. I want the money to go...
It would go in the litigation.
Well...
Well, George is recommending the EDA.
If you're going to spend it, I'd say send it to the EDA, and then the EDA will...
And that's my recommendation.
And all I'm saying is say that.
And that's fine. I'll be happy to amend the resolution to do that.
And that's a good outcome.
I mean, that's why I brought it up. See, they haven't gotten my report because that wouldn't happen until tomorrow.
Right.
Well, along with sending $50,000, you know, let's not lose sight, this is still public money. So I would like to see us make some recommendations on the disbursement of it. Certainly, EDA doesn't have to be bound by it, they're their own body, but I think we'd be remiss not to at least make a suggestion.
Especially if we are donating the $50,000.
There you go.
Well...
You don't have to do that.
Well, this is EDA money. Right?
If you pay them the $50,000, it becomes EDA money. But if you make it conditional, then they can only spend it on your conditions. I'd be happy to modify the ordinance any way you want.
And get the right language.
I would like to see it dispersed to the attorneys.
We said that.
It needs to be in the resolution.
Okay, yes, sir.
We have a... we're a victim of the counter here because the EDA met before we could have this discussion with you. They, as George says, they have greater authority and power. They can lend money. We can't do that. That's prohibited by the Constitution. So they... that's why the state has EDAs and housing authorities to do things that local governments cannot do. At the last EDA meeting, the EDA agreed, and that was a good conversation. And my recollection of that conversation was very similar to yours. They would prefer to see the money go directly to the attorney and not to the confederation of plaintiffs. I'm not going to call it a PAC because I'm not sure it even has a PAC status, but... so I think... and your chairman is there, so I think the message is there. When we were discussing...
On the same page, right?
Yes, sir. When it came up that it appeared that the EDA was the best vehicle, the first question I raised was, are we going to backfill their funds? Because I think we should. And so your discussion tonight, I think, is right on the mark. I think it's only fair to do that. And so George can revise the appropriation ordinance so it's appropriating money from our general fund to the ADA.
To be paid to the attorneys.
Well, you can put some whereas's.
Yeah, we'll make it clear what your intention is.
Thank you guys for working with us on this matter.
That's what we're here to do, is be a conduit if we can.
As John said, we're really... it was sort of reversed. We had... we didn't know whether the EDA would support doing it or not, so we had to go to them with a generally awarded... a generally awarded resolution to expend the money, and they were really agreeing to expend it without any guarantee of being reimbursed. And then council wanted to spend it, but we had the reservation about council sending it to the attorney or any other group. So... but this way, now that both sides have had the discussions, we can make those... make councils' ordinance more specific.
And we all share the same... I would recommend that you only pay whoever the public entity is, pay the attorney directly, that it not go into one checking account and wait for the attorney's bills. So that can...